Well, I'm glad you could join me today and this is our last session for the Bible study. By his wounds we are healed. We are in session number six, which are the wounds of stealing, false witness, and coveting. You'll find it in your workbook, page thirty-one. Hopefully you also have a Bible nearby and we will get started. So let's begin with our opening prayer. Let us pray. Lord Jesus, you did not come to steal but to give, to offer up your life as the perfect sacrifice for our sins. You are the faithful witness who carried out your father's will. As we prepare in these final days of Lent to celebrate your resurrection on Easter morning, help us to grow in wisdom and in the knowledge of your word, so that we will joyfully share with others the truth about the forgiveness and life that you have won for us. Amen. So, the wounds of stealing. I wonder if you have ever experienced a time when a valuable possession was taken from you? I remember the first time that I moved back from Florida to New England and I had my studio within New York City and a friend of mine in New York said, "It's not if, but when you get something stolen from you." And I had that happen after a client meeting. I had a great leather satchel that I carried everything in, you know, my wallet and everything in there. Luckily, this day, the only thing that was in there were my car keys. And the rest was paperwork that could be replaced and samples of some design work that I had done to show the client. But there was not much of importance within that. And I mean, it happened within the matter of seconds of that being taken from me. And you know, I still remember that. I know that in New York, I probably won't walk on Eighth Avenue and Thirty-Eighth Street. I just know I probably won't go there, where that happened. It happened in a Starbucks there and it was very, very crowded and it happened within split seconds. And so, you know, you remember, you know, if it happened to me, it's gonna happen to somebody else and how devastating, devastating it is when something's taken from you. So you might want to take a time right now and maybe there's something that was brought to mind about something taking from you. Pause the video, write it down in your workbook, or if you have a separate journal that you're using for this Bible study, just jot it down. Maybe there's some story that you remember about something being taken from you. Well, welcome back. And we are now on page thirty-two within our workbook and we're beginning the study on stealing. So the introduction says, "Jesus, of course, did not covet or take what belonged to others. He, who is the truth, could not bear false witness, but false witnesses were brought into his trial to testify against him. Yet everything those witnesses could not agree on their lies. Jesus was condemned for truthfully answering the question, 'Are you the Christ, the Son of the Blessed?'" Jesus was and is the Christ, the Messiah, the Son of God. He came to bear our sins of coveting and lying in his own body on the cross, and by his wounds we are healed. So the study asks us to jump right in to some scripture readings. I have them printed out again. But as you know, I like to go to the source. And so we're gonna read Exodus twenty fifteen through seventeen and Deuteronomy five nineteen through twenty-one. And as you know, when it's presented that way in the past, we've kind of read the exact same scripture. And so Exodus twenty fifteen through seventeen and Deuteronomy five nineteen through twenty-one. Exodus twenty fifteen through seventeen. "You shall not steal; you shall not give false testimony against your neighbor; you shall not covet your neighbor's house; you shall not covet your neighbor's wife or his male or female servant, his ox or donkey, or say anything that belongs to your neighbor." Deuteronomy five nineteen through twenty-one. "You shall not steal; you shall not give false testimony against your neighbor; you shall not covet your neighbor's wife; you shall not set your desire on your neighbor's house or land, his male or female servant, his ox or donkey, or anything that belongs to your neighbor." We're not to covet anything. These final commandments all deal with forms of theft and of desiring something so badly that you may be willing to steal to obtain it. We are not to steal the money, property, or possessions belonging to someone else. What kind of theft is involved in the command? "You shall not bear false witness against your neighbor." What kind of stealing happens? What do you steal when you do false witness or you testify falsely against your neighbor? Well, to bear false witness is to steal your neighbor's good reputation or good name. It's kind of like identity theft today. You know, people steal identities in order to, you know, take out money from bank accounts and to buy houses and to take out loans and all that kind of stuff. It's that kind of thing. That's stealing. You know, we, in scripture, it calls about false testimony, doing false testimony, but this is another kind of stealing. So let's look at Leviticus nineteen, Leviticus nineteen nine through sixteen. Leviticus nineteen nine through sixteen. "When you reap the harvest of your land, do not reap to the very edges of your field or gather the gleanings of your harvest; do not go over your vineyard a second time or pick up the grapes that have fallen; leave them for the poor and the foreigner. I am the Lord your God. Do not steal; do not lie; and do not deceive one another; do not swear falsely by my name, and so profane the name of your God. I am the Lord. Do not defraud or rob your neighbor; do not hold back the wages of a hired worker overnight; do not curse the deaf or put a stumbling block in front of the blind, but fear your God. I am the Lord. Do not pervert justice; do not show partiality to the poor or favoritism to the great, but judge your neighbor fairly; do not go about spreading slander among your people; do not do anything that endangers your neighbor's life. I am the Lord." It's kind of interesting in each one of those statements, it's ended with, "I am the Lord." Who should we fear? We should fear the Lord. The Lord could snuff us out rather quickly. So these instructions, these commands that the Lord is giving from himself are ones that we should take not too lightly. We should take them to heart. So we are not to steal in these verses. God commands his people to give. What are some of the ways in which they are to show care and kindness to others? With what statement does God close each collection of commands and instructions in these verses? Why would he say this as he gives these commands? I think I jumped ahead, but anyways, let's look at some of the reasonings behind these. So what are some of the ways in which we are to show care and kindness? They should, when you're, when, in ancient times, when they were harvesting, they were not to, you know, some of the stuff would fall off out of baskets and how they're collecting things fall on the ground on the wayside, you know, or as they're tilling with their animals, it would just fall to the wayside. They're not supposed to pick that up. Why? That's where the poor would then come and glean from these gardens. And if you remember Ruth, Ruth gleaned at Boaz's garden. So that's kind of an interesting thing there that he did as the Lord commanded, you know, leave, and he actually, in the story, if you read it, he says, "Leave a little bit more. Leave some good stuff." You know, usually it would have been sorted through and tossed away, you know, something might not have looked okay and anyways, it was tossed aside. So they should allow some grain or grapes to remain after the harvest so that the poor can gather what is left. They are not to rob or oppress a neighbor, and they are to pay workers on the day the work is done. I guess that's payday every day. "They are not to harm or curse the deaf or blind." Each time God says, "I am the Lord", he may be reminding the people that he is the Lord of all things, who brought them out of slavery. He also reminds them that he alone is their God and the Lord, and that they are to obey him. It's not just written down as a prescription, oh, this would be, "In order for you to be a good person, this is what you ought to be doing." No, this is what God says to do. And when God says he is Lord over all things, when he gives the program, I guess we should get in line. So let's read Colossians three, one through eleven. Colossians, we're jumping to the New Testament really early in this study. Colossians three. Colossians three, one through eleven. "Since then you have been raised with Christ; set your hearts on things above where Christ is, seated at the right hand of God; set your minds on things above, not on earthly things; for you died and your life is now hidden with Christ in God. When Christ, who is your life, appears, then you also will appear with him in glory. Put to death therefore whatever belongs to your earthly nature: sexual immorality, impurity, lust, evil desires, and greed, which is idolatry. Because of these the wrath of God is coming. You used to walk in these ways, in the life you once lived, but now you must also rid yourselves of all such things as these: anger, rage, malice, slander, and filthy language from your lips. Do not lie to each other, since you have taken off your old self with its practices and have put on the new self, which is being renewed in knowledge and the image of its Creator. Here there is no Gentile or Jew, circumcised or uncircumcised, barbarian, Scythian, slave, or free; but Christ is all and is in all. There are many material things we may need or want. At what point does wanting something become coveting? So you may want to pause the video, think about it, and come back, write a few answers down, but when, at what point does wanting something become coveting? That you want it so much that that's all you're consumed about? I can remember thinking about all of my friends who had cell phones and I hadn't gotten one yet and wanting and wanting and wanting and wanting one, researching what's the cheapest one, what's the best plan, all that kind of thing. You know, we see long lines of people waiting at the Macintosh store for the latest round of iPhone. I mean, we see it, you know, unfortunately, at Christmas time, when, you know, there's the rush, the mob of people going in looking for that perfect gift, so to speak. You know, and that, you know, a son or daughter, or mom or dad would be so disheartened if they didn't get that. You know, I mean, I think it's, when it comes that time where we're so obsessed with those kinds of things, we need to say, "Really? Is that really important in our daily life?" So let's read Matthew six, nineteen through twenty-four. Matthew six, nineteen through twenty-four. "Do not store up for yourselves treasures on earth, where moths and vermin destroy and where thieves break in and steal, but store up for yourselves treasures in heaven, where moths and vermin do not destroy and where thieves do not break in and steal; for where your treasure is, there your heart will be also. The eye is the lamp of the body; if your eyes are healthy, your whole body will be full of light; but if your eyes are unhealthy, your whole body will be full of darkness. If then the light within you is darkness, how great is that darkness? No one can serve two masters: either you will hate the one and love the other, or you will be devoted to the one and despise the other. You cannot serve both God and money." What does the Lord Jesus have to say about our earthly treasures and our desire for them? In what way might verses twenty-two to twenty-three apply to coveting? And how might money become our master? Well, we are to store up treasures in heaven. That's specific about what we're to store up, not storing up earthly treasures. We are to serve God and not money. Our eyes may be something that we covet, and we might then be led deeper into sin. Money can become our master as it fills our thoughts and takes all of our time. We become obsessed with keeping what we have or getting more. I know when I had my studio, that was a main contributor to building it. You know, building it bigger and greater and better than what it was before. And that's not wrong. It's just, what's the heart of that? The heart was just to get more money, to get more things, to, you know, be more powerful, to be more accepted, or to be known even more. You know, those, you know, whatever the heart is thinking about, there's always underlying reasons for why the extra money and things and materialism that we take in. So let's read Galatians five, nineteen, nineteen through twenty-four. Galatians five, nineteen through twenty-four. "The acts of the flesh are obvious: sexual immorality, impurity, and debauchery; idolatry and witchcraft, hatred, discord, jealousy, fits of rage, selfish ambition, dissensions, factions, and envy, drunkenness, orgies, and the like. I warn you, as I did before, that those who live like this will not inherit the kingdom of God; but the fruit of the Spirit is love, joy, peace, forbearance, kindness, goodness, faithfulness, gentleness, and self-control. Against such things there is no law. Those who belong to Christ Jesus have crucified the flesh with its passions and desires." Which of the works of the flesh lead to sins against the commandments that forbid theft? False witness and coveting. Which fruit of the Spirit lead us to obey these particular commandments? So let's look at those again. So we have acts of the flesh, sexual immorality. Can those lead to coveting? For sure. You know, coveting our neighbor's wife, you know? That certainly would be in there. Impurity and debauchery, for sure. I think those could lead to coveting and and false witness. Idolatry and witchcraft? Sure, idolatry could be the love of money, by worshiping money, and thus, because you don't have it, you may go after it. Hatred? Sure. You can hate a neighbor for getting that new car and wanting one. Drunkenness, orgies, and the like, of course. I mean, those as well. I mean, it could be that, you know, maybe you sobered up and then you meet a friend at a bar at Applebee's, it could be even. And you're there and you, you know, they order a drink and you don't and you start to get envious of what they're drinking and wanting that. You know, that, all of this kinds of stuff can, can lead us to theft and false witness or coveting. I mean, you know, we can even look at the political campaigns and see how much false witness goes on about the other side and what goes on. You know, that there are lies and on both sides of the fence that happen. And that is not good. That produces fractions within the community. Which fruit of the Spirit leads us to obey these particular commandments of not stealing, not having false witness, not coveting? I think all of them do. With the number one, love. If you love your neighbor, you're not gonna speak against him. If you love your neighbor, you're not gonna steal from them. If you love your neighbor, you're not gonna be envious and coveting so much so about their new digs and whatnot. Even joy, peace, forbearance, kindness, patience, the goodness, the faithfulness, gentleness, and self-control. Self-control is the number one that combats coveting. Self-control is put in place so that we can say, "That's great for them." That was hard for me to come to grips that some of my friends were professionally making it better than I was. And it was easy to fall into the trap of self-pity and coveting what they have or had that I didn't have or had. So let's read Mark. Let's look at what it says here. "Jesus, our Lord, came to take from us not our material possessions, but our sin, guilt, and shame, and to give us forgiveness and eternal life. In his earthly ministry, what did the Lord give to others?" The Lord gave himself. In his earthly ministry, let's think about, let's think about the four thousand and the five thousand people that he fed, right? Through, he did one with two loaves and two fish and five loaves, five fish and two loaves. I can't remember right now, but you get the idea. I mean, he was there, he gave all he could, whenever he could, he was giving. Let's read Mark ten, seventeen through twenty-two. Mark ten, Mark ten, seventeen through twenty-two. "As Jesus started on his way, a man ran up to him and fell on his knees before him. 'Good teacher,' he asked, 'what must I do to inherit eternal life?' 'Why do you call me good?' Jesus answered. 'No one is good except God alone.' You know the commandments: you shall not murder; you shall not commit adultery; you shall not steal; you shall not give false testimony; you shall not defraud; honor your father and mother." "Teacher," he declared, "all these I have kept since I was a boy." Jesus looked to him and loved him. "One thing you lacked," he said, "go sell everything you have and give to the poor, and you will have treasure in heaven. Then come follow me." At this, the man's face fell. He went away sad because he had great wealth. The wealthy young man in the story believed that he kept the commandments. Why did he reject the treasures of heaven and refuse to follow Jesus? What commandments was he breaking with that decision? The young man would not follow Jesus because money was already his God. Answers, our answers might vary about how he committed these sins, but the young man, he committed idolatry, loving his money more than Jesus. And he was also coveting, desiring to keep what he had, instead of sharing it with others. You know, Jesus gave when he could. I mean, out of what, out of little that he had, he gave much. You know, if we see someone in need and we can meet that need, we should offer a hand of mercy and grace. Let's read Mark ten, twenty-three through twenty-seven. So we just need to go down a bit. "Jesus looked around and said to his disciples, 'How hard it is for the rich to enter the kingdom of God!' The disciples were amazed at his words. But Jesus said again, 'Children, how hard it is to enter the kingdom of God! It is easier for a camel to go through the eye of a needle than for someone who is rich to enter the kingdom of God.' The disciples were even more amazed and said to each other, 'Who then can be saved?' Jesus looked at them and said, 'With man this is impossible, but with God, but not with God. All things are possible with God.'" So why do you think the disciples were so astonished at Jesus's words about the rich and the kingdom of God? The disciples may have thought that wealth was a sign of God's blessings. So many today think about that. They say, "If I've gotten God, I am gonna be wealthy and therefore that shows God's blessing on me." So surely, rich people could enter heaven, is what they thought. But of course, he says, "You know what? It's easier for a camel to go through the eye of a needle than someone who is rich to enter the kingdom of God." And I don't know how many of you used to think, I mean, I used to think when I was young, that little needle, a camel going through that. But here's a historical little tidbit about the eye of the needle. If you look at the gates in Jerusalem, there is a narrow passage to one side. And that narrow passage is about the width of a camel. That's about all that can get through there. And so camels with their packs on, their packs would have to come off in order to go through that little, little gate that's on the side there. That's what they call the eye of a needle. Because it's so thin, that you could just barely, I mean, you could, you really touch both sides going through there, that, you know, a camel would have to suck its gutt in to go through. And so it's kind of, that's what they're talking about here. So salvation for any of us, rich or poor, would be impossible. Only through God's grace are we brought into the kingdom. That's why, you know, he says, "With man, man, it's impossible to be saved by yourself. But with God, all things are possible." It's all possible through God and his son, Jesus Christ. So let's look at Mark twelve, forty-one through forty-four. Mark twelve, forty-one through forty-four. "Jesus sat down opposite the place where the offerings were put and watched the crowd putting their money into the temple treasury. Many rich people threw in large amounts, but a poor widow came and put..." Many rich people threw in large amounts, but a poor widow came and put in two very small copper coins worth only a few cents. Calling his disciples to him, Jesus said, truly, I tell you, this poor woman. Uh this poor widow has put more into the treasury than all the others. They gave out of their wealth, but she gave out of her poverty, put in everything, all she had to live on. What lesson does Jesus teach about earthly possessions as he watches a widow give her offering to the temple? Jesus said that the poor widow gave more than anyone because she put in everything she had into the offering. Gifts and offerings are often more than they appear to be and are not always measured by their size or amount. I mean, the scripture calls it only, only a few cents. But some scholars say that the two copper coins that she put in there weren't even worth a penny. Um in today's um monetary standards. Um but but that doesn't matter to God, she gave everything. Where everybody else was going and lauding and putting in all this, all what they had um out of their wealth. They still had a ton back home, she came and she gave all she had. Those who wanted to destroy Jesus did not accuse him of theft, but they did accuse him. Of forbidding people to give tribute to Caesar, Luke twenty-three, two. What had Jesus said that probably led them to make the accusation? They were also afraid that Jesus would take from them the power and authority they enjoyed, even under Roman rule. John eleven forty-seven through forty-eight, let's read Matthew twenty-seven eighteen. Matthew twenty-seven. Eighteen. For he knew it was out of self-interest that they had handed Jesus over to him. What did Pilate recognize about the coveted covetousness? Of those who had delivered Jesus over to his judgment? Jesus had told the people to give to Caesar what was Caesar's and to give to God what was God's. Pilate knew that the chief priests had delivered Jesus up out of envy or jealousy. Perhaps jealousy of the popularity and authority he had with the people. Though Jesus always spoke the truth and he himself is the truth. At his trial, many people bore false witness against him, let's read Mark fourteen fifty-three. Through sixty-five. Mark fourteen fifty-three to sixty-five. They took Jesus to the high priest and all the chief priests, the elders and the teachers of the law came together. Peter followed him at a distance, right into the courtyard of the high priest. There he sat with the guards and warmed himself at the fire. The chief priests and the whole Sanhedrin were looking for evidence against Jesus so that they could. Put him to death, but they did not find any, many testified falsely against him, but their statements did not agree. Then some stood up and gave this false testimony against him. We heard him say, I will destroy this temple made with human hands and in three days will build another, not made with hands. Yet even then, their testimony did not agree, then the high priest stood up before them and asked Jesus. Are you not going to answer, what is this testimony that these men are bringing against you? But Jesus remained silent and gave no answer, again, the high priest asked him. Are you the Messiah, the son of the blessed one? I am, said Jesus, and you will see the son of man sitting at the right hand of the mighty one and coming on the clouds of heaven. The high priest tore his clothes, why do we need any more witnesses, he asked. You have heard the blasphemy, what do you think? They all condemned him as worthy of death, then some began to spit on him. They blindfolded him, struck him with their fists and said, prophesy, and the guards took him and beat him. Which of Jesus's sayings did they attempt to use against him? The false witnesses claimed that Jesus said he would destroy and rebuild the temple, but their testimony did not agree. They were using that statement, there, but the testimonies of them didn't agree. So let's read John two thirteen through twenty-one. John two. Thirteen through twenty-one. When it was almost time for the Jewish Passover, Jesus went up to Jerusalem. In the temple courts, he found people selling cattle, sheep and doves and others sitting at tables exchanging money. So he made a whip out of cords and drove all from the temple courts, both sheep and cattle. He scattered the coins of the money changers and overturned their tables. To those who sold doves, he said, get these out of here, stop turning my father's house into the, to a market. His disciples remembered that it is written, zeal for your house will consume me. The Jews then responded to him, what sign can you show us to prove your authority to do this? Jesus answered them, destroy this temple and I will raise it again in three days, they replied. It has taken forty-six years to build this temple and you are going to raise it in three days? But the temple he had spoken of was his body. What had Jesus said, what did he mean when he spoke about the temple? Jesus told them to just go ahead and destroy the temple and he would raise it up in three days. He was speaking of the temple of his body and of his resurrection. Jesus did not sin, he did not break any of the commandments, even the command against coveting. But there was something he desired, our salvation, let's read John twelve twenty-seven. John twelve twenty-seven. Now my soul is troubled, and what shall I say, father, save me from this hour? No, it was for this reason I came to this hour. As the hour of his death approached, what did Jesus say about his coming? This is his purpose, this is what I call the the uh promised plan of God or the purposeful plan of God. Was this moment right here, Jesus said he had come for this purpose, the hour of his death. Let's read Mark ten forty-five, Mark ten. Forty-five. For even the son of man did not come to be served, but to serve and to give his life as a ransom for many. What does Jesus say here about his purpose? Well, Jesus says his purpose was to come to serve, to give his life as a ransom for many. So we sin daily against God's commands, we could never be good enough to earn God's favor. For our sins, we deserve death and separation from God forever. God in his grace, his undeserved favor for sinners sent his son to suffer the penalty for sin in our place. Let's read Colossians one eleven through fourteen, Colossians one. Eleven through fourteen. Being strengthened with all power according to his glorious might so that you may have great endurance and patience. And giving joyful thanks to to the father, who has qualified you to share in the inheritance of his holy people. In the kingdom of light, for he has rescued us from the dominion of darkness. And brought us into the kingdom of the son he loves, in whom we have redemption, the forgiveness of sins. What is now ours through faith in Christ? Forgiveness, forgiveness for all the wounds that we have studied throughout this entire study, the. The wounds of blasphemy, the wounds of violating the Sabbath, the wounds of dishonoring authority, the wounds of murder. The wounds of associating with sinners, the wounds of stealing, false witness and coveting, all those wounds that we. Have been studying, all of that has been forgiven through the life, death and resurrection of Jesus Christ. God delivers us from darkness and transferred us to the kingdom of his son, in whom we have forgiveness of sins. Redeemed in Christ, in baptism, we put off the old self and have put on the new self. Which is being renewed in knowledge after the image of it, its creator, Colossians three nine through ten. We have now been created in Christ Jesus for good works, which God prepared beforehand that we should walk in them, Ephesians two ten. God's holy commands are laid out before us like stepping stones. We know his will as expressed in those commands, that we are to love him and to love our neighbors as ourselves. So let's read first Timothy six, six through eleven, first Timothy. First Timothy six, six through eleven. But goodliness with contentment is great gain, for we brought nothing into the world and we can take nothing out of it. But if we have food and clothing, we will be content with that, those who want to get rich. Fall into temptation and a trap and into many foolish and harmful desires that plunge people into ruin and destruction. For the love of money is the root of all kinds of evil, some people eager for money. Have squandered from the faith and pierced themselves with many griefs, but you, man of God. Flee from all this and pursue righteousness, godliness, faith, love, endurance and gentleness. What should our attitude be toward wealth and possessions? We should be content with what we have, not desiring to be rich, because wealth can be a trap and a source of temptation. What should we covet or what should we pursue with a passion we ought to pursue um righteousness? Godliness, faith, love, steadfastness and gentleness. We are not to bear false witness. So let's read Ephesians four twenty-five through thirty-two, Ephesians four. Twenty-five through thirty-two. Therefore, each of you must put off falsehood and speak truthfully to your neighbor, for we are all members of one body. In your anger, do not sin, do not let the sun go down while you are still angry. Do not give the devil a foothold, anyone who has been stealing must steal no longer, but must work. Doing something useful with their own hands, that they may have something to share with those in need. Do not let any unwholesome talk come out of your mouths, but only what is helpful for building others up. By according to their needs, that it may benefit those who listen. Do not grieve the Holy Spirit of God and with whom you were sealed for the day of redemption. Get rid of all bitterness, rage and anger, brawling and slander. Along with every form of malice, be kind and compassionate to one another, forgiving each other just as in Christ, God forgave you. I guess that's the thing that happens when you record um live is that uh. The phone rang, if you didn't hear it through the, I was trying to talk louder than the telephone for the scripture. That we just finished, um and if there's a blip in the video or a change in the setting and whatnot. That's because I had to answer the phone, so let's get back to our scripture reading. Um we had finished that up Ephesians four twenty-five uh through thirty-two. And the Bible study asks us this question, what should our speech be like? We should speak the truth and say those things that build up others. You know, there, there's another scripture verse that we're not probably gonna talk about, but it's by the tongue. Um things either die or they live, death is by the tongue, death and life are from the tongue. Which is so true, let's read Luke twenty-four forty-five through forty-eight. Luke twenty-four. Forty-five through forty-eight. Then he opened their minds so that they could understand the scriptures, he told them, this is what is written. The Messiah will suffer and rise from the dead on the third day. And repentance for the forgiveness of sins will be preached in his name to all nations. Beginning at Jerusalem, you are witnesses of these things. What kind of witness should we bear? We are to bear the witness to all that Jesus Christ has done for us, proclaiming repentance and forgiveness in his name. That's basically the gospel, the gospel is that he came. He showed us how to love one another, he forgave us of all of our sins. And now our sins have been washed by his blood and we can live because he rose again. And we will be with him for eternity, that is the truth, that is what we should. Be speaking to others. So let's read um the responsive reading at the end of. Our study, which you'll find on page thirty-four in your workbook. Will read this responsibly, for you know the grace of our Lord Jesus Christ, that though he was rich. Yet for your sake, he became poor, so that by his poverty might become rich. The point is this, whoever sows sparingly will also reap sparingly. And whoever sows bountifully will also reap bountifully. Each one must give as he has decided in his heart, not reluctantly or under compulsion. For God loves a cheerful giver and God is able to make all grace abound to you. So that having all sufficiency in all things at all times, you may abound in every good work. So we are at the end of this Bible study and I hope that you found it. If not insightful. Challenging maybe, but also that a reassurance that. All of the sins that we have wounds for in our life have been taken upon Christ. He was wounded for our transgressions, he was, he was scourged for our iniquity. And upon him laid all the sins of the world. And by his scars, by his wounds, we are healed. Just a reminder that you can call the church or you can send us an email with your prayer requests and we will pray for you. For anything that you have coming up, even this time of isolation, you may. Be feeling kind of down and separate, separated and isolated. Let me just encourage you and and know that we are here for you and we think about you often. Kind of like what Paul says in his letters, I wish I could be with you, but I can't, but I think of you often and I pray for you. And I know that your faith is strong to pull you through, let's pray. Father God, we thank you, we thank you that through your, the study of your word. Father God, we thank you. We thank you that through your, the study of your word, we can see that the wounds of stealing and coveting of false witness, that if we have done that in the past, they have been placed upon you, that you have been wounded for our transgressions. And by your stripes, through your wounds, we are healed. We thank you, Lord, for forgiving us our sins and offering your sacrifice of your son. And as we walk through Holy Week, may we be reminded of the price that you paid for our lives. Lord, we thank you for bringing us close to you during this time, to know exactly what your son has done for us, so that we truly might repent, might turn from our ways, and walk in newness of life. And Lord, as we close, we're reminded of the prayer that your son gave us to pray, by saying, our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us today our daily bread, and forgive us our sins, as we forgive those who sin against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, thine is the power, thine is the glory forever. Amen. So I hope you enjoyed this Bible study. Uh Pastor Steve and I will be discussing what's gonna be next, and we'll let you know through announcements. So until then, Happy Palm Sunday, and I hope that we will see you online for Easter, where we get to rejoice, that our Savior has risen from the grave and lives forever and ever. Amen. God bless you.